Call the order, Finance Committee. Order.
Don't give her the gavel.
Give me a hammer. Somebody give me a hammer. Issuance of bands.
So actually, what I'm going to present to you tonight will be in the order of the legislative requests that are in this package, which is a little different than the agenda. And first is just a minor clarification to the 2013 adopted capital project budget. Specifically, the total amount is accurate, and I have two sheets attached for you. But when the budget was adopted and presented, there was a million dollars contained in the sewer fund, which should have been represented as being a water fund project. And that is the wastewater treatment plant replacement of centrifuge. The centrifuge is still being replaced, and it is contained in the sewer fund under the wastewater treatment plant improvements of 1.5 million. And it's the pump generator to run three wells that's really represented by that million dollars. So basically, this is not changing at all. The components of the capital projects that were adopted, it's merely something that came to life when we started working with Bureau of Services and Ban Council to prepare for the issuance of the bond anticipation notes.
Are there any questions? Anybody? This is basically, total dollars haven't changed, you're moving it from the water fund to the sewer fund, or vice versa, sewer fund to the water fund. Okay?
I'll move that.
Move.
I'll second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the next item that is before you is the bond anticipation note issuance for the city in this year 2013. We have current bond anticipating notes totaling approximately 6.9 million that will mature in May. And we are advising that those begin to roll for another year. And at that time, we would then go out and request the bond anticipation notes to fund the 2013 capital budget as presented. We've conferred with Bond Council and have put the capital projects, the 2013 capital projects through the Seeker Review. They've all been determined to be type 2, so there's no determination that's necessary to proceed forward. And we've been working with our financial advisor to take the temperature of the market and see what would be best for the city. And it is recommended that we continue in bands. There's no band we currently have that needs to be rolled this year, that needs to be permanently financed. And that is what is before you right now.
You know, we've talked about this before. The bands are much lower interest rates. So the longer we keep them in bands, in this current economic environment, the better, right? Lower interest rate, when you bond them, they go up, it goes up a little bit. And another note where the issue is, while they're in the bands, we do pay down some of the principal. So we are lowering the total balance while taking advantage of lower interest rates. So we want to keep rolling these over as long as, you know, the law will allow us to do that. So I think it's a good thing. Any other questions or comments that anybody wanted to make?
Yeah, I have one. Deb, next year, I think we have maybe about 22 million. That is going to have to go into a long-term bond.
You're correct. Yes, correct.
Are we anticipating then the interest rates can be better for us next year on a long-term bond than this year?
Yes. Well, we're anticipating, I really should be more specific with the answer. We are anticipating that the city will be better positioned to issue permanent debt, as well as the market will be pretty much what you see now, and that we will be able to avail ourselves of some very attractive financing. Probably, I need to guess, I would really be making a guess, but it would be more attractive in the future than it would be for us right now.
Okay, so your opinion that to roll that over, we'll be rolling that over?
Yes, correct.
Okay, to that. And I know, Carl, you mentioned the principal, but we're paying a very small amount on our principal, right?
It is a small amount.
Like, less than 2%?
It is a, yes, it is a small amount. But as Mr. said, it is, it is not just pure interest.
Because we're, we're rolling over like 62 million, plus the 6.9?
Fifty, 59.9.
Plus the 6.9?
Plus the 6.9, so we'll have a total issuance of 66.8 plus, as the city has done in the past, cost of issuance we put into the bond anticipation.
But next year's the golden year, if I'm not mistaken, for about 22 million or so to be?
You're correct. Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just, if there was a dramatic shift in the market, these bands are structured in such a way that we could move to long-term financing in a relatively short period of time?
We have...
90 days or so to...
Right. Within nine, yes, exactly.
So if we felt we had to make moves, the market was changing, correct?
We have 90 days.
We could lock in, you know, jump on? Okay.
Within 90 days of the maturity of band's...
It's a one-year ban, so, okay. All right. Great. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
No, I'll move that.
Move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, vote.
Will you adjourn?
Is there a second event?
Yes, second.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
All right, I'll call City Development and Planning to order. The first item on the agenda is, let's see, is the recognition of March as the New York Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transsexual Health Month. Just give us, you know, ceremonial resolution on that. Ms. Porterfield, who is it? Second?
Yes, I'm happy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, one second.
Yes.
Who has the information, and I'll give draft?
We've got it. There's actually an actual draft of the resolution in our packet.
Thanks.
The second one, Recognizing Irish Heritage, St. Patrick's Day, which we've done lots of years. Okay, Ms. Porterfield, who is it?
Second.
Second, Ms. Barazo, all in favor?
Aye.
The third is just discussion. It's something that I mentioned a while back, but the mayor and I have had a conversation about this also, that I would like to offer to our neighborhood groups the idea of teams of us going to a particular meeting when we're invited. And I just wanted to, I mean, I recognize not everybody's going to be able to go every time, but, you know, if we can at least get several of us together, just, you know, go meet with the neighborhood groups and hear what their concerns are, and respond to any of their questions and all. So I just wanted to put that out there and see if you're all in support of that. And then we'll communicate with all the neighborhood groups and just if they would like us to, you know, come to their meetings, we will do it.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I'll take the motion. The medical hospitality houses, we had the public hearing on that. Anybody have any questions on that? Has there, there's not been any change whatsoever since last time, Mr. Strickland came to talk to us?
No, not that I have any change. The public hearing, it's not a proposal website.
There was only one speaker, if I recall.
Yes, in support, yes. Yep. So I'll undertake a motion to move that forward. Okay, Ms. Porterfield?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bombers Burrito Bar wants the wrangler of the open container. Open container. Yes.
There was some problems last year with the Hampton Inn. They had a number of guest complaints because they did have a live band outside until 1:00 a.m. And I know that there was loss of revenue at the Hampton Inn. So I'm not opposed to this, but I think we need to go in conjunction with our noise ordinance on when the bands need to cease. I don't see any problem with people still staying outside, but the live music was an issue. And I know that the hotel manager had to refund several customers. And I, to be honest, if I were staying in a hotel and there was live band outside my window at, you know, 1:00 in the morning, I'd have discomfort with that. So I'm not sure whether we're 10:00 p.m. or 11:00 p.m. on our noise ordinance.
I have it in my head. I would have to check. I think it's 11:00.
But I think we should put the stipulation in of the fact that the outdoor music needs to cease in accordance to our noise ordinance.
Any other comments? All right, then I'll undertake a motion to approve this with that provision. Okay, Ms. Barazo, second, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
And the Energy Advisory Board appointment, we have a letter from, copy of a letter from the mayor, making those appointments. And mayor, was the one person we didn't have an address for, did you get that clarified?
Yeah, I apologize. I still did not see that today. If that had come in or not, the last name on the list just wasn't able to verify an address. Do that, and just would like the person to at least reside in the county, not withdraw that name in this order, put the names on a sheet of paper and randomly pull them out. That was how I picked the length of term. It's just the last one, they were trying to track down the address to answer the council on Monday.
So I'll undertake a motion to approve this pending information on Ms. Seng.
And these are appointments to be made by the mayor only, right? And then we just approve it?
Well, they nominated and subject to confirmation by the council. And these are all names that came from the Energy Advisory Board, or the remnants of that board, or this council member, Blanchard, that was kind of steering this.
Is there anybody new on the list?
I can't tell you. There are some changes from the old board to this group of individuals, but it's just evolved from, again, that old board, individuals that are going in the circle.
And if you go back to the information we had for committee, probably one of the emails from Dana Swallow, she did mention one person was new, that she was going to be involved with it. I don't remember which one it was now. Ms. Porterfield?
Mayor, you said that you wanted the residents to live in Schenectady?
The county.
Out of the county, not the city?
My preference is everybody move to the city of Schenectady. Sometimes that doesn't quite deal with everybody. These were the names that were getting involved with the board before, and I'm just forwarding that, because that was the informal agreement that existed before with the council. Formalize the board, point those individuals, and they would then, you know, go forward on a more formal basis.
Okay. Anybody else? I'll undertake a motion to approve this pending received information on the, on the same. Okay, Ms. Porterfield, second?
Second.
Ms. Barazo, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, if there's something else to come before City Development, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Ms. Barazo, second, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. All right, I'm going to call to order government operations. Just a discussion regarding the possibility of changing the council meeting time to something a little bit earlier, 6 o'clock versus 7 o'clock. Really, just something that was brought up to me, passing it along for discussion. I think, you know, if we, if enough of us like the idea, I think we should also have some sort of public time, that the public can speak and give us feedback about that idea. I think when the council, you know, lifestyles has changed a little bit, I think at one time, everybody went home after work, had dinner all together, and now I think it's just kind of people elongate their day instead of touching base in between. So just wanted everybody to have ideas and discussion and opinions. That's all.
Well, I think we should put it forth for the public, some type of public hearing to see what their input is, since, you know, some people still may go home or, you know, may build their life around the 7 o'clock. But while we're discussing that, one of the things that's come up before the council a number of times is the length of time that people get to speak. So I don't know, I think that that's something we should also consider taking a look at, because, you know, we hear it on a regular basis, and as recently as this week, I think we've got an email regarding that. So people seem to think three minutes is too short.
Well, back to the original discussion on the meeting time. I would prefer it still to be 7:00. However, only because I come a little bit of a distance or more. But what we have done in the past is we have changed the meeting from like June through August earlier.
July and August.
That's what I mean, yeah. Like June, July, and August.
It was just July and August.
Well, I'm throwing in June in there, just to...
We could go with the rest of the twelve months.
I'm throwing it in there, to kind of make it an even quarter. But I'd be, I'd be amenable to that right now. But I just can't guarantee sometimes, coming from up north with the snow and everything, that I'm going to get back in here at 6:00. If I'm going to get here at 6:00 without killing myself, yeah. You need me here.
Yes.
You want me, Dad?
I actually prefer it where it is. I'm one of the folks that gets home, spends time with the kids, you know, gets to see them on that Monday, and then comes back here. So to do it at 6:00 would kind of split me. So I might just come from work straight here, and then by the time I get home, the kids are already sleeping. So I prefer it later, the better. So...
You think at like 8:00 or 8:30?
If you go from 9:00 to midnight, that's really my open time, you know?
Like 9:00 or something?
Well, then the three-minute talking period really wouldn't be an issue, probably.
Soon as your wife has to put him to bed and the crying starts, she can come down.
Come back and...
I mean, I really would like to hear from everyone so that we know it's even worthy of going forward with public discussion. Because if enough of us aren't in favor of it, then there's not...
Right, it is our meeting.
Any reason to.
I'm definitely not in favor of it. I was one of the people, when we did have the summer hours, that I wasn't happy with that either, because I was working at the time. And I didn't miss any meetings, but it's very hard for somebody that wants to make a meeting that's working, that wants to come home, and maybe their job, you're going to have to shower, try to grab a bite to eat and come back. I think we have to do what is in the best interest of the public, and the public's used to meetings being at 7:00. Going way back, meetings were at 8:00. Then they went to 7:30 for a while, then they wound up at 7:00. So I think that's a good compromise. I think people are used to it, even the viewing people that watch on TV, they're used to it. And I don't think we should change this, because what's most important is to get as much input as we can from the public, and I think 7:00 is the ideal time for that.
Anybody else?
I like Vin's idea of 8:00.
I'll take it, Harvey.
I can go either way with this. I, you know, in many ways, like the idea of 6:00, because I'm one who doesn't eat dinner before I come to the meeting. I'd rather just wait till I get home. But I can hear the arguments on both sides, so.
Are you feeling either way?
Neither one. Either is fine. But I have to, what Vin said is correct, so we're, you know, the public thinks at 7:00 is a better time, and they want to make sure they're here. I would, I would stick with what...
Absolutely.
What works best for our residents and constituents.
I agree with that. Being, that being said, we have three people that really are ambivalent and three people that feel strongly about 7:00. So, without doing anything formal, what I will throw out there is, if anyone would like to come and speak and give us their input toward a 6:00 meeting, fine. Otherwise, we'll just keep it the way it is. You know, if I hear a lot of feedback from people that they want us to consider 6:00, maybe we go back into discussion again. But other than that, we'll just leave it the way it is for now. Okay. Anything else to come before government operations?
I just want to bring back point of view. Is that something else that we would consider to also include to ask the public about? I think it's a fair question to ask, since people have run it up so many times.
Do we need to have it more formally as an agenda item on a future cycle?
What part?
The longer than three minutes meeting time.
Three minutes, 45 seconds.
If you, I'll just interject something. And I, you know, I'm the person who was on that other side of the rail for a long time. But if you remember, we had almost like public meetings, I don't know if you remember this, or if you remember, Mayor, but we got together with people, we had a little board that was set up, and our issues, people in the public brought it before the board. Then we tried four minutes for a while. Frank Mauricio was council president at the time, and that didn't go over so well. I think that was cut out after about maybe a month or two. But I'm not in disfavor of having people speak. My thing has always been, let the chair determine if somebody's rambling, and to call it to order and tell them to summarize. So that's always my thing. But that was tried before. Four minutes was tried at one time, maybe about six, seven years ago, I'm just going to guess. But again, I'm not for stifling the public at all.
Well, the thing about, like, the chair calling it, and I understand what you're saying, but one of the concerns that people have had is that you get to talk three minutes and 30 seconds, and I get to talk three minutes even. So for that point, I don't, I don't think that we should, we would want to do that. I mean, if we're going to say three, three and a half, let's do that, but not like, you know, their importance is really important, so let them talk a little bit longer. Because, you know, people are totally opposed to that, and I understand that.
I guess maybe you're misunderstanding my point. I say have no clock whatsoever.
Oh, oh, no!
When somebody's speaking...
I would never say that.
This is what my point, but that's what I'm saying, though. I know you're not saying it, but that's what I'm saying. Have no clock, let the chair say who is rambling, who's not rambling, who makes good...
No.
Well, I'm just, just so you know, other municipalities don't have a time clock, just so you know. Watch the Rottenden meetings, watch the Niskiuna meetings, just so you know. And I don't see chaos going on there, so...
I'm not sure if Rottenden is giving them the worldly view of it. I think across the...
It's just, we do use them when we're talking about other neighboring things. So just to throw it out there, that's all. We are the only ones that I know of in our area that have a time clock. That's all, it's just simple as that.
I think across, some do, some don't. You know, I think it's, some people are going to like it, some people are going to hate it, you know?
Let's think about this a little bit more, and we'll put this on as an agenda item.
Any other business to come before government operations?
No, I'll adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Call to order health and rec. Jeremy's...
Jeremy, you have the one?
Carl's actually homesick today.
Oh, okay.
Carl's away today.
What's it worth?
This was presented before, it's not the amendment fee structure, but the amendment time limit on the, on the pavilion itself. And we wanted to amend that to a four-hour block of time for the pavilion itself, just to try to limit the amount of overuse that it gets, so we don't have to expend more resources with city staff to monitor the activity and also do the cleaning afterwards. The amount that you pay, the fee that you pay now, which is the $50 fee, just covers enough for the rental of the pavilion and for the staff itself. So we just wanted to kind of limit the amount of time, instead of letting somebody come in for $50 and letting them use that for eight to 10 hours for the whole day, kind of limit the block of time for four hours. And this went to a public hearing, I believe, before, and there were no speakers at that time. So we look to get that fast.
Just a couple questions. If somebody wanted it for eight hours, could they then give you $100 and take it for two shifts?
Of course, yes, definitely. You can rent, you can rent as many blocks of four-hour time limits as you'd like to. If you wanted to rent it for 12 hours, that's fine. But you're going to rent four-hour increments, and it's going to be $50.
Each per hour, yes, okay.
And these blocks, this is for quarter of the pavilion, a half the pavilion?
The blocks themselves, the four-hour time limit is going to be for the entire pavilion.
Entire pavilion.
So if you come up and rent a quad, it's going to be four hours. If you rent the entire pavilion, it's going to be four hours. We just want to limit that time.
Oh, but the price of $50, is that, is that for one quarter, is that for the whole thing?
No, $50 just for one quarter.
On page 23, yes.
And the $50 deposit, that's on top of that, and if they get that back if the place is left in, or am I confused with this?
No, no, I know how, if, I don't know that that, I'm glad that that stayed in there. It's more of a deposit for cleaning the pavilion, yes. If it's satisfactory...
If it's really, if it's really a disarray, I know that's been happening.
Correct. That's what we want to, we want to utilize that, those funds to clean the building. The extra cleaning that's going to have to be done, the extra staff that's going to have to be used to clean that building, that's what the deposit will be used for. But other than that, the deposit will go back to everybody who's...
It'll be refunded.
Yeah, it'll be refunded to them automatically as soon as it's cleared by park staff.
Was that $35 one, was that in there before?
The $35 one has, it has been in there, it's stayed in there, it's for non-profits, school organizations. And this, those, the non-profits are more apt to use the building longer than anybody else, I'd say. So this kind of, it limits them to that four-hour block where they can only, where if they want to go and use it a little bit longer than they can, but they're going to have to, it'll recharge the quarter.
And then the weekends are more expensive for non-residents?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I just have one question. We discussed the cleaning fee and how we're going to work that out, how people are going to pay it, and how they're going to get reimbursed. Is that all worked out? Is there a process to get that done?
That is, that's going through our tax department. Logistics have been worked out with that, where they'll take the deposit in, and they'll refund that money back as well.
Do you feel, one more, I'm sorry. Do you feel that's enough $50? Because I, from what I understand, there's been some events there that the place has really been a mess.
The larger events, yes, of course, you do get your, the mess that we kind of come accustomed to. $50, I think, is enough to cover what we need to do. If it's an extreme case, obviously, you're going to have more extreme than that. This is a mid-road charge that we can, I think, is reasonable for all taxpayers.
Any other questions?
I'll move it.
Okay, any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to come before health and rec? I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
So move. You second it?
I second, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Okay, I'll call to order public safety. First item on the agenda is the award bid and contract for the uniforms, fire department uniforms. Chief?
Hello.
Hi, chief.
The uniform bid was posted, and I have to say Tina purchasing worked very hard on this with, that we chief for was a little complicated. We had provision in there that we could take the best price on certain items. And I'm asking that we do that in this case so the bid will be split between the United Uniform and MES buyer for uniforms. And the price that MES gave us on some, basically shirts and embroidery, so far under everybody else, that it was worthwhile to split it. So that's what we're asking to do.
Okay, questions, Mr.?
Do you have the break, kind of, how the prices came in, or how much were added, more or less?
I do have that. I don't have it with me tonight, but I can tell you, it's, they were almost $10 cheaper on the shirt. So it's definitely worthwhile doing that.
If you could just send me kind of the specifics of how...
Or just pending, you know, pending approval for Monday night, we'll...
Absolutely.
I'll be around to you tomorrow.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions regarding this? Okay, is move, is your second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Chief, the next?
Okay, the next is kind of a follow-up on action that's been going on for some time. We were able to successfully acquire the DAIS rescue system devices that Council President King and some of you saw at the tower through the Wright Family Foundation, who awarded us a grant last year. And, but there is another component every firefighter has to have, I did make some comments, so you know what I'm talking about, has to have harness that he or she wears, and the descent devices attached to that. And that did go out to bid, and the... And that did go out to bid, and the lowest bidder was Garrison Fire. And I'm asking that we accept this bid. This money has actually been set aside from the 2012 budget because this is, this project's been going on, so there's no additional cost for 2013. The funds were set aside last year.
Excellent. Great job on getting that grant, too. Questions, comments?
Be happy to move it.
Okay. Seconded, all's in favor?
Aye.
Nice job, chief, thank you. Congratulations on getting that.
Chief, I didn't see that detail in there, so if we get both packages over the council in the morning at the power service. Thank you.
All right, lastly, Mr. Pollster, the contract between Omaha Hudson River Humane Society and the city.
This is essentially the same thing that we had last year, the last contract that we had expired in December. And we are in the process of building some kennels, but we may as well have overflow. And so this will be a contract with them, that we would continue to have a facility for the overflow.
Okay, questions? This is pretty much the same contract as it was last year.
I'll move it.
Okay, so move second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, if there's nothing else to come before public safety, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. House in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
We should mention with claims that there are two additional items to the building versus the city. One is regarding, that's something with the water department, I believe?
Yes.
And the other one is dealing with ASME agreement.
Okay, you'll call to order claims? Is all this executive session?
Yes.
Stuff Mr. Pollster, okay. I have a motion going to executive session.
So moved.
Second.